Yeah.
Try and get one more motorcycle ride in before.
Yeah.
Have to put her away.
Well.
It's gonna be twenty-five degrees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. At the end of the week, we're gonna get almost thirty-five.
Usually when it breaks that crust, it's coming, isn't it?
They're saying thirty-three, but that could be something to change.
Oh, good. I brought my stamp. That one day we was gone and she goes, I have some signatures. I made them this statement. It was like forty-five minutes later. I'm still signing things. I mean, it was a full file cabinet. Yeah.
That happened to me once, you know, when I was vice chair. Learned my lesson.
Just once. He said it happened to him once too.
Yeah, I think it was Myron or no Brenda was chair. I was vice, I think.
Yeah, I got a stamp now, Lee, so we're good.
Reporters.
Yeah. Can't bring on either.
All right. Good morning, everybody. It is nine o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting of the Cottington County Commission to order. For this Tuesday, October third, twenty twenty-three. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Charlie, can we have you lead this today?
I pledge allegiance to the state of the state, seven.
It should be noted that all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Gable, who is zooming in this morning. So he is here for the meeting. Uh, just reminder to turn your cell phones off so that we don't have any distractions during our meeting. Otherwise, uh, it costs you donuts next week. Know that very well. Call for public comment. Public comment may be submitted in person or via telephone. By calling six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Item number three, any conflict of interest items?
No, no.
None for me.
None? Okay. No items noted. Action to approve the October third, twenty twenty-three agenda. Take a motion. Motion by Schwerer, second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Number five, action to approve the September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three minutes of the Cottington County Commission meeting. Motion by.
Second.
Johnson.
Okay, Joe.
Oh, man. Second by Waterman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. All right, motion carries. Sorry about that. If you could turn your name plaques towards me, that'd be great. All right, uh, number six, action to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four Cottington County five-year highway and bridge improvement plan. Rick, good morning.
Good morning. This is something that we have to do to get our bridges replaced. And, uh, we already had the public meeting, so this is just to finalize it. The skull gets sent to peer and and, uh, then it gets sent back. So we have records of everything that, uh, is going on for our bridges right now.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion?
That would be a motion to authorize the vice chair to sign the resolution.
Okay.
We're gonna add that in there. Okay, so that was Gable and.
Johnson.
Johnson. Okay.
Finally.
All right.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Number seven, action to approve a quote from Dunic to repair aprons on the bridge on County Road six. Rick?
This was not a budgeted item. This, the bridge on each end of it is really rough. We had to dig out the west side and they'll, they'll mill some more. There'll be four inches on the west side that'll be new down to two inches, roughly forty to fifty feet on each side of the bridge to make a nice, smooth transition. And, uh, they came up with a quote of sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to repair that.
Just have one question about that, Rick.
What's that?
Uh, it cost what it cost, but who's gonna, who's gonna provide traffic control on that?
They will.
Uh, they said they're not.
Oh, no, we will. Excuse me. I, I was thinking of painted and lines and stuff, a lot of stuff going through my head. We will do that.
Okay.
For them. Okay. So, sorry about that.
Not a problem. Just a question.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman. Any discussion?
Yeah, the dollar amount of sixteen six, you have it in your budget to be able to cover that?
We'll be able to cover that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mount is in the budget. Commissioner Gable, do you have something?
That was my same question that Commissioner Johnson had.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight, monthly reports, and we'll begin with extension this morning. Jody? She brought donuts.
More donuts.
Oh.
Figure cookies instead.
Oh.
Um. So it is National Four-H Week this week, and we have Four-H Spirit Week on our Cottington County Four-H Facebook page, and we've had lots of comments on there. So it's great to see what everyone's, um, yesterday was Monday memories and um, Sunday was shout out Sunday for their Four-H clubs. So we had lots of people naming their Four-H clubs from the past and the present right now. Um, last week while we were at SDSU Extension Conference and here, um, kids are working on their Four-H record books and award applications. They're due to our office on Friday and will be judged by the Four-H leaders this month. And then our Four-H recognition event is Sunday, October twenty-ninth at two P M. So they're working on ending a year and we're beginning a year. So our new Four-H year begins on October first, and we have youth three enrolling, rolling already. So call the office if you're interested in joining Four-H. Um, I'll be attending the National Four-H Conference in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania next week, um, with some colleagues. We do get a regional North Central Region, um, award out there also. Um, a few colleagues getting awards too. So, um, I'm helping with Progressive Ag Safety with their, um, presentation, and then I have two colleagues giving, uh, workforce development, um, thing out there too. So from South Dakota. Um, Four-H Clover Buds will begin in November after we know how many youth we have. Um, last year in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had fifty Clover Buds and twenty-one of them turned eight and they'll be joining Big Four-H this year. So
That's great.
So that's pretty good too. So that they are joining Big Four-H. So just to find them clubs now and everything. So for you. So you guys could share. Sorry, Lee. Hopefully they'll leave you a cookie.
What time is it?
We'll put it in your.
What's that?
Put it in my drawer. Okay.
Two. Yeah. Yeah. Any questions?
No, that's it.
All right.
Thanks, Jody.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Thanks.
Big Four-H. I like that term. All right, V S O.
Sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, not a whole lot, uh, to talk about this week, uh, but since I've been here quite a bit lately. So we have a hundred and fifty-nine open claims, uh, seventy-seven pending action claims at the VA, two hundred completed year to date. Um, the monthly amount, uh, increase is, uh, thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. So that year to date overall monthly increases is just shy of a hundred thousand dollars. It's ninety-six thousand dollars. Um, retro payments was a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So year to date, we hit the, uh, over a million dollars, one point one million dollars and some change. Uh, one veteran transported in September, one currently scheduled for October. Uh, lettering on the front door is complete. The outdoor sign is on order, should be in in place within the next week or so. So, um, a lot of good comments, uh, of the veterans coming in the office. So, um, that's the positive thing there. Work study starts tomorrow. That's been approved. Uh, we have the contract from the, the VA and stuff like that. Um, I'll be meeting with the commanders of the Cottington County Veterans Organizations tonight. Uh, we'll be on the radio Thursday morning. Again, the Veterans Day Summit, uh, ceremony at the County Extension Building, uh, Friday, ten November, ten hundred hours. Um, Secretary Whitlock will be the guest speaker. Any questions?
Which group of veterans is responsible this year for the?
Um, usually the.
Rotate it around.
Nope, nope. It actually usually the, um, Memorial Day is done by the Legion and Veterans Day is done by the V F W.
Oh.
Usually that's kind of a standard for, for the last several years. So.
I know that we had talked about that work study. Can you just elaborate a little bit on that, what they're gonna be doing there?
Um, well, right now, um, to start with, um, they, they, they work for the, the, the VA from that's how they're paid and stuff like that. But initially, all the file cabinets with all the old DD two-fourteens and old claims, um, that's gonna be the first tasking there. Um, then we'll try to, you know, hopefully start doing some scanning into, uh, again, she, she's, she's, uh, she, she's gonna be, um, scanning and like, uh, medical documents and stuff like that. She's not gonna have access to Vectra Spec or VPMS from that standpoint. So she's gonna scan, put it into the C driver, then Jay will grab it.
Okay.
And then put it in there. So stuff like that, maybe some outreach, uh, from that standpoint, uh, talking with veterans and stuff like that. That's kind of where. So.
Good. Okay.
Chair, I had, I, I visited with, uh, Todd and Jay yesterday about this, but, uh, couple of weeks ago when we were down at Conference of Sioux Falls, the legislators met for the, the, their last time in that summer study and they, uh, uh, broke down, there's about seventeen different, uh, issues that were brought to them on that particular day when we were there. And they narrowed it down to, I think it was eleven. And one of those eleven was veteran service. And, uh, I don't, there, there hasn't been any bills, a bill written yet. And, and I just wanted to give, uh, Todd, Jay a heads up and you, you folks here too. And I'll be watching when a bill actually does surface. So we can see what's in it, but the justice of it was to, um, turn the Veteran Service Administration over to the state. And, um, I don't know how and what that all involved. And, and that's what we gotta keep an eye on. So watch that very closely to see what's going on. So, uh, uh, just a heads up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Can I, can I just elaborate on that, on that? Just so, and so it's kind of a talk about like how to, there's this talk about regionalization, you know, with all sorts of county services to include veteran service officer. So yeah, one of the options like Commissioner Johnson said would be the state would, would take it. I mean, it's just an idea at this point. I mean, I, but I don't think the idea includes that, like our, our local veteran services offices would go away. It might be regionalized, might not be in every single county. You know, in that idea, but it, it just means that, you know, there would be state employees as opposed to county employees, you know, that, that kind of thinking. So just an idea at this point. Um, but, uh, and the, I did have a question for Todd, just what, what radio station are you guys gonna be on?
Uh, we're on, uh, K W A T usually around, uh, eight forty, eight thirty, eight forty, just give or take. And then, uh, nine o'clock will be on K X L G.
Okay, thank you.
Live and local. All right. All right.
What? We shouldn't get your tie on.
All right, Community Health Nurse. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. All right. I had sent over stats and also, um, a written report. Um, we have that position open for that, uh, WIC Public Health Assistant, um, that I believe interviews will be starting very shortly with that. Um, for training purposes, um, we are starting to implement a new, um, temperature monitor, monitoring system for our fridges and freezers that house our vaccine, um, which will help us streamline, um, the temperature monitoring and we'll be able to get, um, like alerts on like email and text messaging in case our fridges or freezers were ever to go um, out of range, which is super helpful when we have bad weather and then we don't have to have send someone in to make sure our fridges and freezers are still in. Um, we are also going to be using a new, um, check-in system for our state employees for our flu shot clinics, and we are going to be having training on that. Uh, we started, uh, all the school immunization audits for all of schools in Cottington County. Um, so that keeps us very busy during these, um, fall and winter months. Um, we have flu vaccines in our office. People are eligible to come get those. Uh, we have our state flu employee clinics scheduled. They will start next week. We have three different clinics that are scheduled. Um, and we're also working with the schools that we contract with, um, to provide flu shot clinics with them as well. Um, our numbers have continued to stay steady in WIC. Um, that division between WIC and Public Health Nursing was completed on September first. Um, we continue to work, um, with both sides and being in our office, we continue to refer back and forth, and that has been going well. Um, August was breastfeeding awareness month. We were able to give four baskets to our breastfeeding moms, two that were breastfeeding fully and two that were breastfeeding partially. Um, we use both state and county funds for that, and they were all very excited. So we are very thankful for that. Um, we continue to order car seats. Um, every order that we put in, which is twice a year, we continue to increase our order because we continue to run low on those. Um, we should have our next shipment coming in. So we are very thankful about that. Um, four out of, four out of our five school services are completed. We will, um, wrap those up in October and towards the end. Um, and I continue to go to the interagency meetings, um, once a month, and I'm also on the advisory council meeting with the county that, um, the welfare office holds. So things have been going well, pretty steady. Um, going forward, when I present again in, um, January, there'll probably be two of us here presenting. Um, I will do the public health side of it, and then someone will come and report on the WIC numbers as well. Um, and immunizations have continued to rise. Um, the numbers for September that you see on your sheet are a little bit low just because I had to have these, the report done by Thursday and last Friday, um, our office did forty-five more immunizations in one day. So add thirty-six to forty-five, and that's a little, yeah, we're, we're busy with immunizations, which is pretty to be expected. And um, once school's starting and all the schools are sending their kids over to get immunized. So otherwise things are going good. Questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to go back to the maternal health and.
Yeah.
Car seats. You've got more coming in.
Mm-hmm.
Who qualifies for those?
Um, so it.
How do you qualify?
Yep. So you have to be on an assistance program. So either like WIC or Medicaid, um, CHIP, SNAP, TANF, um, like energy assistance, housing assistance, some type of like government assistance program and not have a car seat. So it's not for like additional car seats. Like if mom has one in her car and dad wants one, it's only if you don't have one at all. So.
That, uh, is that for parents or is that extended grandparents?
Um, is so whoever would be the caregiver of the child is, is eligible for it. Yep. So it goes off basically like if the child is on WIC or receiving some type of assistance, or if the, the caregiver is, they're able to receive that as well. So and we do, um, like can, um, convertible seats. So all the way down from like newborns up to the age of two, we then transition into high back boosters, um, just regular booster seats. So we kind of have the whole strain of them too.
Just to say along with the, our next question is that they are very, very good car seats.
They are, yes.
Yeah, that was not the question.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, they're top quality.
Even thinking that.
Yeah. They're very, very good quality.
They're nice. Yeah, we have, we've had a big influx of them. So.
So if somebody has a question about obtaining one, they can just get you ahold of you at the office.
They can just call our office. Yep. And we just have like a little screening form that we go through and then they just come in and sign some forms on them. So.
All right.
What brand, what brand do you buy?
Even Flow.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Awesome.
All right. Well, we're gonna keep you up here, I think, here for just, uh, the next item. Um, discussion, let's move on to item number nine, discussion, possible action to approve the revised Public Health Assistant job description. Do you want to come up Natalie and Cody, I guess? Commissioners, you all have that in your packet.
You want it?
Sure.
So.
So you can. I think it was just added that. Yeah, okay.
Maybe you don't need to be up here. I don't know.
Right.
But.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, yes, so we talked about a couple of weeks ago now or more, the public health assistant position and hiring for that position, and you had approved that. Um, this is of course, um, the situation where the state has the WIC program and the community health program, and we as the county provide administrative support. So we have the, um, administrative support on the community health services side that has been continuing, and now we're hiring for this on the WIC side. So in conversations with the state, um, they had indicated the federal requirements for the WIC position, um, includes being able to be available to meet on evenings or Saturdays if absolutely necessary and can't do during the daytime. So this position needs to be able to do that. And so we are, um, as Cody mentioned earlier, we are currently hiring for that position. And so we've been telling applicants that and making sure that that works for them. But we need to officially update this job description. So, um, you'll see on the, the last sentence that was added on the summary section. Um, this position may require you to travel to assist with services. Um, that is also because they're working as part of the Northeast teams. So it might involve travel to Clark or Hamlin or Grant, I believe. Um, and you may be asked to work evenings and Saturdays to accommodate participants' needs. And then that same um, statement or those two things are listed on the work environment part of this job description as well.
I'm moved to approve the revision of the job.
Johnson moves to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Schwerer. Any discussion? Excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah.
Sitting right in front of me.
Yeah, we have one more for him.
Okay, let's, uh, move on to item number ten, and that is, uh, discussion, possible action, authorize the Chair, Vice Chair to sign an annual State Department of Health WIC contract.
So.
Prove that.
Have that in your packet, Madam Monitor?
I would just add. Okay.
It's second by Waterman.
Clarification, this contract, we need to sign it because of what ended in June, but we've had this position in place for those months since then. So we need to sign this so we can continue paying the individuals out of this grant. And then once you hire the new individual, they will send us a revised one with the new dollar amounts in it.
Okay, so we have a second by Johnson or a, a motion by Johnson to approve that contract, second by Waterman. Any further discussion on that contract at all? Not? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Contract is approved. Thank you very much. Number eleven, action to approve the purchase of trees for Memorial Park. Morning, Steve.
Good morning. Um, in your package, you should have a, a bunch of other information as well. Um, I did send out a few emails here yesterday on them. Um, I'm gonna revise to the, uh, my, uh, spreadsheet that I also sent out with that. Um, I did get some, uh, other quotes and so that from the tree farm, Sioux Valley Nursery and Keith Block, which has his own tree nursery himself. Um, and the first and so that of the list is the tree farm, which they did not have anything that was comparable for twelve foot, foot. There's a six to seven feet spruce trees at two and a quarter with transplanting of a hundred and thirty dollars, um, with a total of three hundred and fifty-five dollars per tree. Um, I, I don't believe they can be able to get them transplanted this fall yet. And so we had, um, but I can double check if, if we do go that route. Um, otherwise Sioux Valley Nursery, they do have ten foots. Um, those at, are at five hundred dollars apiece and transplanting a hundred and fifty dollars, which comes to six hundred and fifty dollars a tree. Those would not be able to be a transplant at for sure until next spring. Okay, Keith Block, which has twelve foot trees, he has a quote of five hundred and fifty dollars a tree with transplanting of five hundred and sixty-five dollars, which of course that's because of mileage from where his location is at up there between Fever and and Sistin, which is eleven, one thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars per tree. And of course, last week presented was Dennis Mullingraph of twelve foot plus. Um, his smallest one is a twelve foot. Otherwise they go up to fifteen to seventeen feet and stuff like that. So, um, transplanting of that would be three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Some of those transplanting of the big trees is because they need to use a ninety-inch spade, um, which is quite large. And then hauling them individually kind of gets the cost up there. Um, which that total cost of, of, from Dennis was seven hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, so first question is how, how many trees do we need again?
We need twenty trees replaced for insurance purposes that was damaged last year in the deracial.
Okay. Is there any, any deductible or any, any?
Um, deductible is a five thousand dollar deductible, which of course some of that was taken care of last year through, uh, um, we used some FEMA. Um, stuff from the damage. We could, we could qualify FEMA. Um, some of the portion was planted last year of ten deciduous trees. So there was a portion of the check already paid last year, but we needed to complete with the, um, spruce trees. And the problem was is getting somebody to get them done last year or the spring was probably is, was the difficult part. Um, so, um, this would end up finishing up for the spruce trees out at the park.
And the, um, is, so is that whatever we do, will that fit within the overall insurance?
Yes, it will. Cause, uh, it was up to a thousand dollars per tree.
Okay.
That is what the insurance company had.
And then my last question is how important is it, I'd say a ten foot versus a twelve foot?
Um, the, the biggest thing is just, just the amount of years that, you know, it takes, the, uh, spruce tree generally grows about a foot a year when it's going good. It's the way, is what it does.
About a year.
Yeah, about a year.
What a year. I have to, uh, pair, I would make a comment here that we're very fortunate. Uh, I lost eight trees, uh, at my place and, and I think I had pretty good insurance, but I didn't get anything. I mean, they didn't cover, they generally never cover trees.
No.
This is really amazes me that it's covering our insurance.
Yeah. And last year in Savannah, I know Cindy turned around and says, you should check to find out if, um, they're covered. So I did contact insurance company and they said, yes, this was underneath the claims that we could co- cover trees brought at the park.
I, I see they have ten-foot trees. And then on the upper end, it's twelve foot plus.
Yep. Um, that would be of my, of my brother Dennis's. Um, I had to go and turn around and try to give you each one of how, how, what their size limits and stuff. It's twelve foot or greater. Um, he actually went and turned around and measured his trees. He has some up to seventeen feet that would be would be in an area that these would be coming out. So.
That's, that's a little bit iffy to transfer it, uh, to move them that tall though.
It is that, but that's why, um, this Keith Block, actually what he does, he wraps the tree like a Christmas tree.
Yeah.
Puts them in a bundle and then with the ninety-inch spade, he also turned around and says with those type of trees. So those larger trees, he says he will show how to do the proper watering on them and proper care. Cause he says, if you follow it pretty close and of course weather can depend on it a lot. And so, uh, but, uh, he says you do the proper, I have close to ninety-some percent of my trees that I do.
And soil type.
Cheap and soil type makes a difference. Yes.
Yeah. I, uh, the ones that, uh, Mullingraph, uh, bid there, Dennis happens to be my neighbor. Uh, just a couple of with the block or so down the street from me. And that's where I got out of that bunch that he has a couple of, three of them last year and, and they're doing well. They're probably eight ten footers, you know, and, and they were doing okay. I, I guess myself, I would probably look at recommending that one, that because he could get them moved.
Yes, he can get them moved.
It's really close.
Yep. Um, in fact, this block and so that said, he could get them moved here this coming month. He's got it. If it's okay.
So with lock.
Yes.
This, and this basically this seven hundred and fifty-dollar tree for that both particular ones from, from Dennis, uh, the insurance company is gonna pick it all up.
Um, we might have to cover a little bit just because of that, you know, of what was last year. Um, I do have enough in the budget to cover the difference and so we had, but yes. I mean, unless you guys want to pull some from, I also should ask, and so we, we want to pull some from him and pull some from somebody else. I'm fine with that too.
The, the thing that, that we need to determine too is, you know, I, I, I specifically requested Black Hill Spruce. I'm finding that out in my neck of the woods are a little bit hardier than the Colorado Spruce.
Correct.
The Colorado Spruce are beautiful. They're the ones that will turn the blue, bluish color, you know, but, uh, they're more susceptible to disease. And, uh, and, and that's why. And uh, and and that's why I I think we could stick with Black Hill Spruce, we'd probably be better off.
Right, is that what these are? Yes, these are black hills.
That's what he has, Black Hill Spruce.
But are are all of them Black Hills Bruce?
Yes, everything that was planted in there is all Black Hills in that in that um area. Um, the previous um resident that planted them several years ago and so we had picked all nothing but Black Hill Spruce in there.
All of these three. Uh, I'm sorry, Lee, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go go ahead, Charlie.
Commissioner Waterman.
Uh, all of these trees are Black Hills.
Yes, they are. Yep, I recommended Black Hills Bruce from everybody. Um, even though a couple of them, you know, wanted to sell some Colorado's to get some variety, but uh, I said I need to pick Black Hill Spruce.
Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, just um, the so they can all plant them by fall, but before the winter except for the first one?
Um, yep, they can be all planted in all these from this and so that will be planted here in October.
Well, I guess I would make a motion that we take um ten from Sioux Valley and ten from Dennis.
Okay, so you have a motion for ten for Sioux Valley and ten from Dennis Mollengrath. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Schwer? Any more discussion on that?
Just full disclosure that, you know, Dennis is Steve's brother and Myron's neighbor, just to make sure, you know, we're upfront about all that.
So I just have one question then for clarification. So with Sioux Valley, they will do their own um.
Yep, that will not be until next spring.
Okay, so those ten will not happen until next spring and they will do the planting with their spade or whatever that's called. So now with the ones from Dennis, it's so in the next action then to to approve the transplant, that would be by that Keith Block.
Yep.
I don't know if we would just do that all in one motion. We have it kind of separate, going to do Sioux Valley, then we have two different individuals.
I didn't, I didn't, excuse me, my motion only included Sioux Valley and Dennis Mollengrath.
Right, but part of the spading is included in those quotes with the different.
Correct, correct, but but I didn't, I wasn't talking about Keith Block doing this, the transplanting. Um, so that's at least on my motion. So do I need to amend what what what's going?
But right now, I think he's taking care of the first.
Yeah, you're just taking care of the purchase of trees. So you want to purchase half from Sioux Valley and half from Dennis Mollengrath, correctly?
Okay, I I thought the transplant was included. Yes, well, I thought, yes, and I thought the transplanting was included in those in those prices.
It is, but we have item number twelve as action to approve the.
I'm not looking at.
We have the purchase and then we have the transplant as two separate items. I think we can take one item.
Well, and the thing is like Sioux Valley, they, so it would be two different individuals doing the transplanting. So Sioux Valley will do their own. He's got a hundred and fifty in there if you purchase it from him. And if you purchase them from Dennis, then Keith Block would do those.
Okay.
So that's where I just want to. I don't know how you want to.
I didn't realize that, okay.
But and you do realize then these from Sioux Valley will not happen till next spring.
No, I then I didn't, I then I would like to amend my motion. I thought when I asked the question, I thought they all could be done by by uh the fall, so.
What you amended motion, Lee?
Well, my amended.
Do you want to do a substitute?
Yeah, I'll also do a substitute motion to um, to just purchase them all from from Dennis Mollengrath.
Okay, if we have a substitute motion on the floor to purchase all of them from Dennis Mollengrath. Do I have a second?
Uh, no, I I feel better about getting them in this fall and taking advantage of the.
Okay, so second by Schwer. Any further discussion? This is on the purchase.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries to purchase all from Dennis Mollengrath. Okay, item number twelve now. This is action to approve to transplant the trees at Memorial Park. All right, this is the transplant to have them planted in the ground.
At three hundred and fifty-two dollars a tree times twenty, right?
Yep.
I make that motion.
Motion by uh Waterman. Second by uh Johnson to have uh Keith Block, transplant the trees at a cost of three hundred and fifty-two dollars per tree. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. You don't need this on anymore.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to item number thirteen. This is to note Native American Day, Coddington County Office closures and that would be on Monday. So the courthouse will be closed on Monday.
That's what October was. Must be the third night.
The night, yes, October night, next Monday.
They will reopen on Tuesday morning. Item number fourteen, discussion possible action to enact a burn ban resolution. Has anybody talked with Andrew or anything? I don't think we need one.
I noticed one of the counties south of here did actually enact the burn ban. I I think it was south of Sioux Falls, south and west of Sioux Falls. I don't know what county it was right off the top of my head, but, um, with the dry, hot, south wind, it is drying things out pretty darn good, but uh, I I don't know.
Don't think we need a burn ban yet.
Look, 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 you got the forecast, we've got about a ninety percent chance of rain this afternoon, evening and tomorrow, so. I would, I I I can't see the.
Okay, so.
I can't see the need for it.
I'll continue to leave it on the agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, action to approve abatement applications.
Okay, there is nothing for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, or nineteen.
Wow, that's the way to do it.
Wiped out five of them there. Okay. We will come back to those. Public notices, a possible quorum of commissioners that you could be attendance at this week? Anything? Nope, okay.
GOP meetings to, is that to, now maybe I'm wrong, never mind.
I don't think there is one tomorrow, is there? Myron, did you have anything?
Well, I I was just gonna say Wednesday, we have, I don't know if the Republicans gonna have a.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't, I haven't heard anything.
Possibly be, we'll just say that.
To be determined, but we will say that we'll possibly have a quorum present if the meeting occurs. All right.
And then tomorrow morning, I think it's just you and I at seven.
Yeah, you and I and Natalie, I think, and uh highway shop. Okay. Twenty-one, old business. Anybody have anything for old business this morning? Nothing, let's move on to twenty-two, new business.
I don't know, I guess I'll maybe put this under new business.
Okay.
Several things. So with October being kind of a heavier month to pay your real estate taxes, you, just as a note of interest, you can pay them online through the website, the CoddingtonCounty.org website. Go under the treasures tab, you can pay them right online, very easy to navigate through that. Um, also, we did receive a check from Dakota Sioux Casino in the amount of fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. A portion of that went to Rawville Township, three thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents, went to Rawville Township. The city of Watertown received eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and so thirty-three, thousand five hundred fifty dollars and seventeen cents stayed in Coddington County.
When was the last time they sent us a check?
It was last year, I believe, but they've been sending just one check a year now. It used to be two payments, but now it's one.
Did you need that first number again?
Fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, Andrew also brought this up. He said as a reminder, um, tomorrow FEMA will be conducting a test of the iPOS. Uh, the test will reach millions of mobile phones across the country via wireless emergency alerts, WEA, radio and television. Um, Troy, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Just that tomorrow they're going to be doing some testing.
Yep. Yeah, it needs to be tests nationally.
Yep, all I have for today.
Okay. Anything for the open? Public comments? Anything for the open? Anything for the open? Nothing. Commission comments? Commissioners, do you have anything to add? All right, do we need an executive session this morning?
I don't know where Natalie is.
Be, otherwise she'd be here.
You want to check with her real quick? Yes.
This gentleman that's transferring, moving the trees, is it block, like block?
Block, block, yeah. Like a block of wood, like a block of trees.
No need.
No need for executive session. Motion to adjourn by Johnson. Second by Schwer. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great week.
Thanks for uh letting me tune in.
Thanks, Lee.
I'll see you guys.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.